Can you hear everybody, Dale?
Everybody on?
I don't, that's what we're saying, making sure.
Yes.
It ain't right until Dale says it's right. Six o'clock, the guy forgot to turn his mic on and asked about the mics. Thanks. Well, at six o'clock, I'm going to call this meeting of the Erie County Council to order. If you please rise to the National Anthem. Pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Shouerman?
Yes, these words of inspiration, a friend of mine actually sent these to me. It's even though there are days we wish we could change some things that happened in the past, there's a reason the rearview mirror is so small and the windshield is so big. When you're headed, where you are headed is much more important than what you've left behind. Thank you.
Thank you. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Bale.
Here.
Mr. Horton.
Here.
Mrs. Rennie.
Here.
Mrs. Shouerman.
Here.
Mr. Scatella.
Here.
Mr. Wannarski.
Here.
And Chairman Shank.
Here. Well, number four is kind of a fun thing we don't usually do, but we have a special presentation tonight. Mr. Witherspoon, if you'd be so kind. He's one of those city guys across the street.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, members of County Council, for giving this honor to make a presentation to a young man, younger than me, so he's a young man. His name is Mark Rosenthal. He has participated in the Spoon Summer Basketball League and provided security for over 228 kids this past summer. He's been doing it for a while. And just to listen to some of the comments of the young folks makes me very proud to know him. One comment I hear is, hey Spoon, who's that dude over there? I said, what dude? I got 200 people like, what dude? That dude in that uniform. Oh, I said, that's detective. He's a cool dude. I said, why you say that? Because he walk around and he talk to us. He don't holler at us. We kind of like him. I said, that's good. I appreciate it. So, I feel that the cool dude need to be honored. And it's my honor as founder and commissioner of the Spoon Summer Basketball League for 32 years to present this to Mr. Mark Rosenthal.
Thank you, Mel.
To you, my friend.
Thank you.
God bless you.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Say something, man. Say something, man. You've been talking all summer, say something.
Thank you, Mel, I appreciate it. Once again, Mel and his team that he has put on an excellent summer basketball program for the youth to participate in this summer in July and August. Not only the law enforcement present from myself and from some of the city police officers, not only is it a deterrent for any criminal activity to occur, but it really gives us an opportunity to interact with the kids and their parents and the other family members there and have a conversation with them to build a positive relationship with them. So, it's really, it's a good experience, a great experience for us too. So, I appreciate it. Thank you, Mel.
Take care. Well, next we have the hearing of the public. We have four folks that showed up, so Mr. Sam Tellerico, you have five minutes. Please just give us your name and municipality, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Sam Tellerico, Harvard Road, City of Erie. I have been, I've been at these meetings for about the past eight, nine months or so, and after the last one, I felt compelled to speak up about what's called Project Resolve. And we know that there are some procedural issues that Councilwoman Remi mentioned, and we cannot afford to have that set a bad precedent. There are also some legal issues about the use of ARPA funds. And plain and simply, it's not legal. Your solicitor says that it violates the spirit of the law. Carl Anderson read aloud the ARPA requirements, the most recent ones, and this money is for COVID, those affected negatively by COVID, not capital projects. Now, it's possible you may be able to find a judge that says it is legal, but I don't know if you want to take that gamble, risk litigation, and possibly having to pay back money that you don't have. There is a better way. Let's face it, this has been a colossal blunder by this administration. And I say that because not one person in this body is opposed to Project Resolve. I sat for two hours in the last meeting, over 20 speakers, and not one person speaking was opposed to the project. It's a prime example of snatching defeat from the jaws of victory. It created a controversy that we didn't need. There's broad agreement. I know that the county executive campaigned on economic development, but you know what? So did all of you. So does everyone else. But he did not campaign about economic development to the exclusion of everyone else. Furthermore, the administration talks about leveraging county funds. There was no leveraging here. Leveraging implies that the negotiation occurs. There was no negotiation. The administration just said, here's $5 million, and it's not money I even have approved. I don't even have the authority to give it to you, but here it is. There is a better way. Councilman Horton often reminds this body that we exist to provide human services for the community. Now, that's not written in the Home Rule Charter, but neither is economic development written in the Home Rule Charter. He's right, and I know he's right, because your budget says that you exist for human services. Hundreds of millions of dollars are applied every year to serve people throughout the county, and it's your responsibility to provide those services. And you know and I know, the discretionary funds that are left after all the mandated programs is not nearly enough for the needs of our community. County government does not have the resources of a Penn State, who has $140 million in capital funds, of Wabtec, which is an international corporation that has unlimited funds. And those entities don't have the obligations that you do, the obligations for those people in need. I believe the administration has set up a false choice. It's one or the other. You can have Project Resolve, or you can apply the money to where it is needed. I don't believe that. The bottom line is, ARPA is intended to serve the people most in need due to COVID. I implore this council to avoid the legal hassles, to honor your commitments. There is a better way to achieve this project, which involves cooperation between the administration and council and the community. Ignoring these community needs only creates a division and distrust. Council cannot operate effectively in such an environment. I implore you, honor your commitment to the people of Erie County and repair the divide created by this administration. Only then can we reach a successful outcome for the much-needed Project Resolve. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next, we have Mr. Anderson. Name and municipality, please.
Thank you, Carl Anderson, 3830 Parade Boulevard, City of Erie. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, fellow council colleagues, former colleagues, and council members of the administration, and especially fellow residents of the City of Erie. I come here tonight with concerns, but still optimistic. Because in Erie County Council, you are the protector of the people and the services of Erie County. It was said before I was here, while I was here, and it'll be said long after all of us are gone, the buck stops with Erie County Council. You take the vote, you vote on the budget, you allocate the money. You take the responsibility. For everyone else, it's simply politics. For you, it's responsibility. All county services lead to economic development and our community's prosperity. It really is community development, an investment in ourselves, in a strong and confident belief in us together. Our ability for success in community development is a true and lasting impact for real economic development in this community. Unity, collaboration, cooperation, sacrifice. No one gets everything, everyone gets something. It's a fair and equitable mix. That was the mantra that we stuck by when we worked together to collaborate and put together the plans for the ARPA funds, which eventually passed in a 7-0 vote, unanimous vote of this council. Because no one got everything, and everyone got something. We put seed money into the community to help everyone come out of the pandemic. Four members of the council tonight voted as part of that unanimous vote. They worked together to collaborate, compromise. And I have to say, it should not be lost, that those four members that remain here, two are Democrat, two are Republican, two are county representatives, and two are city representatives. What could be a better example of a fair balance of the collaborative work that brought forward that unanimous vote? Now, some are asked to flip-flop on their vote for an incomplete plan to achieve political ends rather than continue to meet these community needs. I've sat by at meetings and watched the administration, the county executive, kill the momentum that this community put forward last year for political ends, halting that progress for personal political gain. And I've watched them point to council and call all of you the obstructionists to progress. Yet, it is he that has stopped the progress. One example, just one example, is a broadband project in Summit Township that has been stopped in its tracks because it cannot get the remaining funds that it needs in the second round of funding to finish a broadband project. When we worked together, we agreed that we would spread the money out and we would work on projects that didn't already exist in this community. And we put together such progressive-thinking ideas as the County Diversity Equity and Inclusion Commission, the Foundation for an EMS and Fire Authority and Supported Volunteer Fighters, Diversity for a Small Business Loan Program, Transformative Grants to Assist Small Business, Small Nonprofits, Community Main Streets, Residential Housing. A program for women as minority in business, which received a $750,000 matching Small Business Administration grant, which has been stopped in its tracks. And we have lost that grant, the only time we've ever received one in this community. We've given money towards Start Program for the Arts, Municipal Infrastructure for Water, Sewer, and Broadband Programs, the District Attorney's Office to fund safety and staffing for Police Athletic League and Neighborhood Resource Programs.
Mr. Anderson, your time has expired.
Thank you. And the list goes on and on, Mr. Chairman, as you know. Stay the course, please, and continue to follow through with the work we started. Thank you.
Next, we have Michael Furman. Michael, are you here? Next, we have Bishop Dwayne Brock. Just state your name and your municipality for the record, please.
A distinguished councilman, I am Bishop Dwayne Brock, 1129 Pennsylvania Avenue. I serve as chairman of the Board of the Erie Housing Authority of the City of Erie. They just awarded me and my team $250,000. I did not vote. I serve on the Board of UPMC Hospital in charge of diversity, equity, and inclusion. They financed my Eagle's Nest program. Did not vote. I serve on the Board of Trustees of the Hammond Health Foundation. They financed my Employability Initiative. I do not and did not vote for it. I serve on the Board of Erie Bank. They are building a bank on 10th and Parade through the East Side Renaissance, where I serve as the founder and the chairman. I am disturbed over the recent attacks of the integrity and character of three of our statesmen within our community, namely, former state trooper Matthew Harris, Executive Gerald Blanks, and longtime councilman Melvin Witherspoon. I think such despicable attacks are unfair and unsubstantiated. It is beneath the dignity of the office for such to dig, to find, and fabricate dirt just to validate what we view as a racist claim. As the longest-serving active clergyman in the City of Erie, I will not stand by while the character of these men are being assassinated and impugned on citywide television. I met with the county executive on two separate occasions, pleading that this madness stop. He responded to me, Bishop, perception is reality. Well, my response is, people's perception can be delusional based upon individual prejudices and bias. Be that as it may, if perception is reality, let me tell you what our perception is. Our perception is that the elimination of the DEI Commission was always the goal of certain individuals. Number two, our perception is that there were and always has been them looking for a reason to defund the DEI Commission. Number three, our perception is that the motivation is not conflict of interest, but blatant racism at its core. Some say that poverty has no color. You are indubitably correct. But economists and sociological experts all agree, as devastating as poverty is, it disproportionately affects people of color all over the world. That's why ARP monies were given and DEI commissions and committees are established all over this country. Finally, I call upon people of goodwill, organizations steeped in community transformational service, like the Erie Community Foundation, The Playbook, The Chamber of Commerce, ECRUP, and other organizations to stand against this racist, barbaric regime of the county executive. And if not, we will have no choice but to take this protest to the next level. I am Bishop Dwayne Brock, and I approve this message.
Now, we're going to open it up to anybody who would like to speak. Step up the microphone, give us your name and municipality, and you have three minutes.
Good evening, members of County Council. My name is Gerald Blanks. I serve as the chairman of the Diversity Equity Inclusion Commission, better known as Diverse Erie. To the citizens of Erie City and Erie County, glad everyone is here this evening. My message is really pretty clear. You know, I could talk about this for a lifetime. In the spirit of time and only having two and a half minutes left, I basically just want to say a few things. Just by a show of hands, how many people remember the days of Polaroid cameras, Kodak cameras, where you had to frantically wave that picture so it could develop quicker? A year ago, this commission was put together to do a really extraordinarily heavy lift. A year later, here we sit. Generational Impact Grant is on the street. Mini-grants, small mini-grants are forthcoming very quickly. The people that are sitting in this audience, in the city and in the county, are poised to receive grant funding for their businesses as a direct result of American Rescue Plan funding. I'm not real sure if County Council, when it put the original commissioners together, if you really understood what you were really doing. And I don't mean that to be condescending or anything like that. What I'm saying is, you have an extraordinary group of professionals that really, in the minority community, are doing extraordinary things. Doctors, business owners, chief executive officers, mental health professionals, all sit around that table, not because they get compensated. They sit around that table because we have to fight for people that can't fight for themselves. And you know, it gets to a point where, you know, when is enough enough, guys? 10 months, 12 months? And we're being called into question. And we haven't even had an opportunity, like that Polaroid picture, to let it develop. All I'm going to say in closing is, all that needs to occur for evil to prevail is for good people to do nothing. And that's not a position we stand for. I thank you for your time, and we really hope that we can get this thing together. Thank you.
Just state your name and your municipality, and you have three minutes.
My name is Benjamin Primus. I am, my warehouse is on 2730 West 12th Street, Fillmore Avenue. I'm the CEO of Ben's Barrels. I invented a cooking grill out of a 55-gallon barrel drum that just took the attention of the corporate world. My invention, right now, is a Giant Eagle at the interchange. My invention, right now, is a True Value on Liberty. I've drawn the attention of world figures. I've had a world figure at my warehouse twice. I've had the vice president of Giant Eagle want to meet me. The vice president of everything that's not food wanted to meet me. My situation is, is I'm doing all this by myself. I'm a black entrepreneur with a heart to win, but there is absolutely no support, let alone black support. There ain't no white, there's no support at all. My warehouse is located in Mill Creek, and I didn't qualify for ECRUP, the flagship, or nothing like that. My primary goal, though, I'm planning to apply a small business for grants, and I'd appreciate if the DEI commissions could fully fund me. That's what that money's supposed to be for. My product debuted at Kraus's. This is a dream come true for me right now, but I don't have no support. I have absolutely no support right now. Black economic development in Erie, Pennsylvania is pathetic. We don't have nothing. We are self-sabotaging our own success, stunting our own growth. We're murdering each other, assassinating each other as characters. It's pathetic, absolutely pathetic. We are actually our worst enemy, but at the same time, I need you. I can't do this alone. I have a product that is very promising right now, but because I have a past, I have a past right now. Is that why people don't want, I have not had one call. I've been in business for two years, I've never had one call from not one black community leader or anybody down here just saying, hey, we seen you on Erie News Now featured guest twice. We seen you here or there, we seen your truck in town, you know, and we see your black man trying to do something, like, we believe in you. I don't have that. Instead, I have people judging me on my criminal history, judging me on my past every five minutes, not even giving me a chance to be somebody. Having my character assassinated and people judging me before the world, Erie, has even got to see this side of me. My primary goal is to give back. I want to give back. COVID is what started the entire thing. My wife lost a 38-year job working with special needs children, and that's when Ben's Barrels evolved. Right now, I have some very big people in my life, but I need help. I really need the DEI Commission, the DIA, however you pronounce it. I need y'all to do your job. And if you're an elected official, we voted for you. We voted for you for what came out of your mouth during your campaigns, for what came out of your mouth. And I am appalled that not one black community leader has even messaged me or even called me and said, what are you doing? How's it going? I'm so alone. Refuse to fall, refuse to lay down, I will get back up. But this is just something, we are on the verge of economic development for the black infrastructure right now, something we don't even have in Erie. It's very minimal right now.
Excuse me, sir, but unfortunately, your time is up.
Okay. I'd just like to thank you. First time here, I've only seen this on TV, so God bless.
Thank you. Anybody else? Just give us your name and municipality, and you have three minutes.
I'm from Leopold, I live in Mill Creek. And I've got to say, I'm honored to be here with some of these speakers and some of these residents. And I appreciate the time and the efforts that you all put in. Where you put your budget monies is what you care about and what your priorities are. So, let's remember that. I'm going to use a little example. Some of you are business owners, we just heard from one. Some of you folks are business owners. Just think of yourself. You're planning your year, your last fall. You're planning your year, your last fall. You budget, you think you've got a certain amount of funds that you're anticipating, that you're going to work with, okay? Then all of a sudden, you get slashed by 30%. What are you going to do? Huh? I ran a business for a while. I had a $9 million business. The last job I had, I had five offices in western Pennsylvania, up and down western Pennsylvania. Somebody would have come to me and said, I'm going to slash you 30%. I'd have to dance. I'd keep going. But then what if they came to you and said, we want another 35% from you because we think that's all you need? Let me tell you, the problems aren't solved in the last year. The problems that have been created are 30, 40, 50 years old in this community. We cannot take money away from an initiative that has the potential to set up that infrastructure, to get that community going. We fly better if both our wings are operating in tandem, rather than if we put one arm behind the back and we try to snip the feathers. No, please. Gtech told me today, one of the board members, Art, wheels on meals. Senior programs, we got all kinds of things that are going to be cut if we don't get the allocation. That was where matching funds for us, that meant we had other funds coming in. So please, when you consider your plans for those ARPA funds, make them for what they were intended, not some big project. You can find another $5 million someplace. Don't take that out of ARPA funds. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Name your municipality, then I'll start your time.
My name is Freda Tepfer. I live in Erie. I'm going to quickly urge people to, the Metropolitan Planning Organization has a public involvement plan, and they're taking comments through December 2nd. There are public meetings online and in person at the library November 16th. This is a very low-profile organization that has a lot to do with transportation project approval and funding, and how they review, how they publicly review the projects. You need to be heard about your wanting to be in on this. Please, go to the county's website, their Facebook page, open the link, and take a look at the plan and comment on it. I've been now at several meetings, and there was an ad hoc committee. And then I was at a meeting a couple weeks ago that the ad hoc committee was supposedly presenting their deliberations to the full council. They had done no new work. They had been asked for details. There was no new work. It was the same bare bones piece of paper they were hoping that the council was going to act on. I was really amazed, and the meeting ended very quickly because it was mentioned that if, if the council approved that plan as it was, even though supposedly it was just a framework, it was going to give carte blanche to the executive to do whatever he wanted. And, and then, since nothing new had been added, the meeting was adjourned. I think it's, there needs to be serious consideration of what's going on with the ARPA money, that, that if there's an ad hoc committee, they need to do some real work, share it with the full council, share it with the public, and not just approve some pie in the sky thing from the executive. I also want to say, at that meeting, there was an example of disparate treatment of people by members of this council and leadership based on the sex of the person. I had been threatened twice that I was going to be thrown out of the meeting if I said anymore about my cell phone being locked up. And then I heard the co-chair of the meeting of the council being treated in such a way that was extremely disrespectful. Then, former council member Anderson got up totally out of turn, not during the public involvement period, and spoke for five minutes and was not stopped until he used the word "lie," and then he was told to leave. Had he been a woman, I bet he would have been stopped much sooner. That was disparate treatment. And the last thing I want to do is just to remind everybody, date your mail-in ballots. Just date them. We don't need any additional hassle.
Ms. Tepfer, your time is up.
The county works hard. Date your ballots, please. Thank you.
Anybody else would like to say a few words? Give us your name and your municipality, please.
That's your name, right? Jerry Servideo, Mill Creek Township. I was at that ad hoc meeting, and this girl said to you people that you should be detailed, detailed in your adjustment to the, the plan, the funds, the Rescue Plan funds. Now, what's a sense of hiring somebody that county paying CPA firm, correct? You know, to give you advice and you totally ignore it. How much are you paying them? And can we afford to continue it if you're going to ignore them? Number two, I watched Mr. Scatella visit Penn State Baron, and he talked afterwards about jobs. The only thing he was kind of leaning on was jobs. Well, did anybody look at or ask what type of jobs were going to be created? What type of jobs were going to stay in Erie County if you spend this five, or grant this $5 million? I, I just don't see it. Has anybody looked at that? Is that part of your looking? And then, and then on top of that, if you read the showcase, now, this is not, this is probably a public opinion, my opinion, my opinion. For them to invite or sponsor the president of the Proud Boys to do a comedy act in this, in this county is not something that's representative of this county. And I don't think you should spend money on, or give money to a school that allows that. I think it's wrong. Unless you're totally with them, then I understand your position. But, you know, that's, that's just not something that belongs, you can keep looking at your watch. I, I just, I just really don't understand this. Are we, we are just so poor, poor, she gives an invocation every week. Are we evil? Or are we becoming evil?
Sir, you will, you will not address and call out the members of council.
I did, I did.
If you have something to say.
Okay.
And you know what? If you don't like my timekeeping, I'm sorry, but that is the rules.
That's fine. But I am not putting her on a point. I'm just saying she has, she had an invocation. We have like a prayer every meeting. But are we listening to the prayer? Is everybody listening? Because I don't see it. I don't see it in cooperation in this council. And if you aren't going to use a CPA form, save the money for the council, for the county. We don't need it if you don't consider the input form. Thank you.
Anybody else like to say a few words? Anybody else? Just give us your name and your municipality, then your time will start.
Jenny Hagerty, and I'm in Fairview, and I want to thank you for your time this evening and the continuing discussions that we have of the ARPA monies. As you are well aware, I've been here now my third time for the Mercy Center for Women, but this is far more important than the Mercy Center for Women. This is the leadership of our community and the importance of being forthright and honest. And leadership changes, and then some people stay stagnant and don't allow for the possibility for, for future movement. One of the things I am concerned about is that $5 million to Penn State Baron, and here's why. I'm not quite understanding why that needs to happen today when there's over $20 million in ARPA funding that needs to be allocated by 2024. Why are we making that decision today when there's homeless people throughout our city and throughout our county not being helped? Okay? So if St. Patrick's Haven, I'm sure you're all aware, had a fire, and now MHA has kindly welcomed them into their home, what would have happened to those people if they didn't? They would go out back and, they would go back out to the streets, or they would be calling one of our organizations to help them. Why is that $5 million need to be voted on today, but we're not worried about the human services and the homeless people and those fighting domestic violence and those fighting addiction? Read the paper today, three of those obituaries are overdose. I see it every single day. So I don't think anybody should be pushed into making any type of decision regarding funding when we have homeless people on every corner, in every demographic of this community. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else like to say a few words? Anybody else like to say a few words? Last call, anybody would like to say a few words? Seeing none, I'll accept the motion for the minutes for the previous meetings to be approved.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
I move the events from the previous meeting.
I have a first.
Second.
I have a second. Vocal?
Mr. Horton.
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie.
Yes.
Mrs. Shauerman.
Yes.
Mrs. Scatella.
Yes.
Mr. Scatella, excuse me. Mr. Winarsky.
Yes.
Mr. Bale.
Yes.
And Chairman Schenck.
Yes. Reports from county officials. Do you have anything, sir? Ms. Shauerman.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. The Finance Committee met on Thursday, October 13th, and submit to the agenda in Old Business, items B and C; in New Business, items A through C and E through G. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll move the Personnel Committee. Ms. Scatella, do you have a report?
Mr. Chairman, the Personnel Committee met on Thursday, October 13th, and submit to the agenda, Old Business, Item A; New Business, Item D.
Thank you, sir. Are there any reports from council this evening? I believe, Ms. Rennie, you said you had a few words.
I do a couple things. We are receiving mail ballots back, which is a wonderful thing. Thousands of people are taking advantage of the possibility of mailing their ballots. But I do have a reminder, in the ballot package, you will see a page like this, instructions for completing your ballot. Just want to urge everyone, pay special attention to this. The instructions do matter. It can be confusing, and that's why this has been done up. I think it's, I think it's well done, and I think it's understandable. Just ask people to pay attention to it. The privacy envelope is especially important to make sure you get your ballot inside that inner envelope before placing it in the exterior envelope and signing the exterior envelope and dating that. So just wanted to make that reminder. Thank you. And then I did want to report on one other thing that may have gone unnoticed. It is a budgetary item, and a lot of times, it comes out that there are people who are, shall we say, voiceless. And in, in this instance, I want to call attention to the situation of Erie County retirees group. They are seeing a large increase in their overall payments on a monthly basis. And this is a group that is nearly 500 members strong. They presently have approximately $165 taken out of their social security checks every month for Medicare Part B health coverage, $329.80 for dependent coverage. And if they are under the age of 65, they are paying that amount on a monthly basis as well. There has been an increase in the deductible proposed by the administration, and I would like to say, request respectfully, that that not be done. The increase in deductibles for the retirees are going from 150 to 300 for, for single, and from 300 to 600 for dependents. That is an awful lot of money for retirees, and you'll hear a lot of comments, in fact, we've heard a lot this past year, about the people that aren't paid enough in the county. Well, in the 1980s, 1990s, 1970s maybe, when a lot of these people worked, the people who worked for the county were paid a pittance, and that's what you see the legacy of today. They really had nothing except a good benefits package that they count on. Many of them were making near poverty wages their entire working careers. This expenditure, this change, proposed change in coverage, according to county representatives, would save the county $155,000 a year. Now, that's on the backs of nearly 500 people who are living on a fixed income. And I just want to point out that if you take two positions that are currently being proposed by the administration, that amounts for the entire $155,000. I just think it's unconscionable to put this on the backs of the retirees at this time. And again, respectfully, I, I don't think it should be done. People are bearing the brunt of this that should not have to. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I see that.
Thank you. Any other reports at this time? Seeing none, we're going to go to Old Business. We have number eight. This is a reading of Ordinance Number 113, but I believe this item is tabled, correct?
It's tabled.
It is tabled. So at this time.
Ordinance Number 133.
Yeah, it has been tabled. So if it wants to be moved forward as a second, I'm going to need a motion to remove it and have it voted back in and on the table. Seeing none, it'll stay tabled. And we will go to B, second reading of Ordinance 138, title only, please.
Second reading of Ordinance Number 138 of 2022, 53rd, 2022 General Fund Budget Supplemental Appropriation of $196,300 and the creation of new line for replacement of prison fire alarm system.
So moved.
Second.
I have a first by Mr. Horton, second by Ms. Scatella. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Rennie.
Yes.
Mrs. Shauerman.
Yes.
Mr. Scatella.
Yes.
Mr. Winarsky.
Yes.
Mr. Bale.
Yes.
Mr. Horton.
Yes.
And Chairman Schenck.
Yes. This takes us to C, Second Reading of Ordinance Number 139, title only.
Second reading of Ordinance Number 139 of 2022, 54th, 2022 General Fund Budget Supplemental Appropriation of $19,588 and creation of new line for AOPC grant in Courts Bureau for Courthouse Security.
So moved.
I have first by Ms. Shauerman, second by Mr. Horton. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Shauerman.
Yes.
Mr. Scatella.
Yes.
Mr. Winarsky.
Yes.
Mr. Bale.
Yes.
Mr. Horton.
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie.
Yes.
And Chairman Schenck.
Yes. This will take us to New Business.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, ma'am.
I would like to move, to amend the agenda, to move items A through C to a second read.
Second.
I have a first by Ms. Rennie, second by Mr. Horton. This is just to move to a second read only. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Scatella.
Yes.
Mr. Winarsky.
Yes.
Mr. Bale.
Yes.
Mr. Horton.
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie.
Yes.
Mrs. Shauerman.
Yes.
And Chairman Schenck.
Yes. See, I just wait for her to catch up.
Thank you.
She has to do her stuff. So this is going to be A. This is a second read of Ordinance Number 141. Title only, please.
Second reading of Ordinance Number 141 of 2022, 55th, 2022 General Fund Budget Supplemental Appropriation of $20,197 and creation of new bureau and lines for Crime Victim Center PCCD grant in the District Attorney's Office.
So moved.
So moved.
I have a first by Ms. Shauerman, second by Mr. Scatella. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Winarsky. Mr. Winarsky.
Yes.
Mr. Bale.
Yes.
Mr. Horton.
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie.
Yes.
Mrs. Schauerman.
Yes.
Mr. Scatella.
Yes.
And Chairman Schenck.
Yes. This takes us to B. This is a second read of ordinance 142. Title only.
Second reading of ordinance number 142 of 2022, 11th, 2022, Public Health Fund Budget Supplemental Appropriation of $175,526 for additional PA Department of Health grant funds in the Tobacco Use Prevention Bureau.
So moved.
Second. I have a first by Mr. Winarsky, second by Mr. Bale. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Bale.
Yes.
Mr. Horton.
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie.
Yes.
Mrs. Schauerman.
Yes.
Mr. Scatella.
Yes.
Mr. Winarsky.
Yes.
And Chairman Schenck.
Yes. This takes us to C. This is a second read of ordinance 143, and title only, please.
Second reading of ordinance number 143 of 2022, the 12th, 2022, Public Health Fund Budget Supplemental Appropriation of $15,000 for additional PA Department of Health grant funds in the Safe and Healthy Communities Bureau.
So moved.
Second.
I have a first by Ms. Schauerman, second by Mr. Winarsky. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Horton.
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie.
Yes.
Mrs. Schauerman.
Yes.
Mr. Scatella.
Yes.
Mr. Winarsky.
Yes.
Mr. Bale.
Yes.
And Chairman Schenck.
Yes. This takes us to D. This is ordinance 144. We did have a discussion about a potential second, so that's basically up to the body to make this a first read or second read. If you want a second read on this, I will need a motion. Seeing none, we will do a first read of ordinance 144, and title only.
First read of ordinance number 144 of 2022, Agreement to Render Legal Services of a Deputy Solicitor for Erie County Council and Associated Bureaus.
Thank you. This takes us to E, Resolution Number 41, and title only, please.
Resolution Number 41 of 2022, Resolution Approving the Fiscal Year 2022 Community Development Block Grant Application and Authorizing Its Submission to the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development.
So moved.
Second.
I have a first by Ms. Schauerman, second by Mr. Horton. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Rennie.
Yes.
Mrs. Schauerman.
Yes.
Mr. Scatella.
Yes.
Mr. Winarsky.
Yes.
Mr. Bale.
Yes.
Mr. Horton.
Yes.
And Chairman Schenck.
Yes. This takes us to F, Resolution Number 42, and title only, please.
Resolution Number 42 of 2022, Section 504, an ADA designation of coordinator for the fiscal year 2022 CBDG program.
So moved. Second.
I have a first by Mr. Horton, second by Mr. Winarsky. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Schauerman.
Yes.
Mr. Scatella.
Yes.
Mr. Winarsky.
Yes.
Mr. Bale.
Yes.
Mr. Horton.
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie.
Yes.
And Chairman Schenck.
Yes. This takes us to G, Resolution Number 43, and title only.
Resolution Number 43 of 2022, approving, approving Joe Maloney as temporary financial consultant.
So moved.
Second.
I have a first by Mr. Horton, second by Ms. Rennie. Any discussion? I'll say one quick word, just for housekeeping purposes. This time of year is very difficult, and Mr. Maloney has served the county for many, 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 many years helping us through the budget. So, and, and thanks to Mr. Horton reminding us, we did bring him in last year to help us get through this kind of sticky wicked. So on the end of that, roll call vote, please.
Sorry about that. Mr. Scatella.
Yes.
Mr. Winarsky.
Yes.
Mr. Bale.
Yes.
Mr. Horton.
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie.
Yes.
Mrs. Schauerman.
Yes.
And Chairman Schenck.
Yes. Before I ask for an adjournment, our next Finance and Personnel Committee meetings are on Thursday, October 27th at 4:00 PM in room 114 Alpha, and I will accept the motion for adjournment.
Mr. Chair, before we adjourn.
Yes, sir.
See, this is kind of cleared out, but I think it's relevant, since everyone's here discussing the budget and our allocations. We're having our, we're having a public hearing on November 1st on the proposed 2023 budget at 4:00 PM, and we'll also be having a second.